Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting, regular meeting, October 8th at 7:00 P.M. If you'll stand for the pledge, I'm going to remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. With liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the integrity of our state under God, one and indivisible.
You may be seated. Our first item is public comment. In accordance with the Texas Attorney General's opinion, any public comment that is made on an item that is not on the published final agenda will only be heard by city council. No formal action, discussion, deliberation, or comment will be made by the city council. Each person providing public comment will be limited to three minutes. And I will call up Tracy Doctor.
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Tracy Doctor, and I'm here today for the Flugerville area youth baseball and softball. Thank you for taking your time today to allow me to speak. I wanted to provide an update on the contract between PABUS and the Flugerville Independent School District regarding the use of the fields at 701 Emanuel. As of August 28th, the contract has been signed by both parties and is in effect. With that now completed, I want to emphasize the vital role that youth sports play in our community and urge you to recognize their significance as an essential part of our city's identity. Youth sports are not just about competition. They are about building character, fostering teamwork, and developing life skills in our children. Every time a young athlete steps onto the field, they learn a valuable lesson about dedication, resilience, and community. These experiences shape our youth into responsible adults and engaged citizens. However, for our youth sports program to thrive, we need the city's support. It is time for us to partner and collaborate openly. We have so much to offer, from creating positive experiences for our children to hosting events that bring families together and enhance community pride. Yet, it often feels like there is a barrier between us and the city. We want to be seen as partners, not just another group asking for help. By actively engaging with our league, the city can demonstrate its commitment to the well-being of our youth. This partnership could lead to improved facilities, more organized events, and greater community involvement, all which will benefit everyone. When you invest in our youth, you invest in the future of our city. Let's work together to create a culture of collaboration where youth sports are embraced as a valuable asset. It's time for us to break down any barriers and to build a strong relationship that benefits our children and our community as a whole. I urge you to see us not as just a separate entity, but as an integral part of the fabric of our city. Together, we can elevate youth sports to a new level and foster a thriving environment for our young athletes. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to the opportunity to work together for the benefit of our youth and our community. With that being said, we also are having, hosting our closing ceremonies November 16th that we would love to invite all of the city council members to.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Elijah Alber?
Good evening, mayor and city council. I stand before you really just to come and say thank you. Thank you for all the work that you guys do, day in and day out. You all look stunning today in the pink and love it. But I'd like to start by expressing my heartfelt thanks on behalf of the Rotary Club of Flugerville and the Wild West Brew Fest team for your generous support of our 2024 event, particularly through the reimbursement of the fees we incurred with the Austin Public Health Department. Extortion, right Caesar? Your commitment to helping us with these expenses not only lightened our financial load, but also showed us how deeply the city of Flugerville values community events that bring people together. Thank you for standing with us and enabling us to deliver an incredible experience for our attendees. I'm excited to share that 2024 Wild West Brew Fest was a tremendous success. We welcomed thousands of people from across the region and beyond. Our top states of attendees were Texas, Colorado, Washington, Louisiana, and Illinois. Not only did they enjoy great beer, delicious food, and live entertainment, but most importantly, this event strengthened the sense of the community right here in Flugerville. It wasn't just about beer, it was about coming together, making a positive impact, and showcasing this great city to visitors who have not discovered it otherwise. Local businesses saw increased foot traffic, hotels were booked, and attendees left with an unforgettable experience that reflects the welcoming spirit of Flugerville. As we look forward to 2025 Wild West Brew Fest, we're incredibly excited about what's in store. We're expanding and evolving this event with new features and even more entertainment options that'll offer a little something for everybody. We've revamped our hop house, which is our VIP area, that'll really provide an elevated experience, and we've adjusted prices to make the event more inclusive for everybody in the community. We anticipate even larger crowds, more positive impacts on the local community, and the greatest year of giving back. Your continued support of this event is crucial, and we hope that the city will again partner with us to make 2025 a huge success. With your help, we can continue to create an event that fosters community, brings in visitors, and showcases all the amazing things Flugerville has to offer, all while raising funds to support our local youth and nonprofits. Again, at the end of the day, I just want to stand before each and every one of you and say thank you. Thank you again for your time, thank you for your past support, and for all that you do for our community.
Thank you. Our next items are presentations of proclamations, and we have a couple. I stand before you today, I don't think this is news to anybody. Breast cancer is the second most common kind of cancer in women. Approximately 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point. The good news is that many women can survive breast cancer if it is found and treated early. A mammogram can help find breast cancer early, making it easier to treat. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer. I proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Flugerville and encourage all residents to join in activities and initiatives that help raise support and awareness of this serious health concern which has claimed too many lives over the years. This evening, I have Monique Strenstree, the executive director of the Central Texas Susan G. Komen Foundation here to accept the proclamation.
I'm just speaking.
Okay. Thank you guys for having me here. I'm the executive director of Susan G. Komen, Central Texas. As he mentioned, breast cancer is the second most common cancer among women. 1 in 8 women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. Susan G. Komen is at the forefront of the fight against this disease. We have funded $1.1 billion of research since our founding, and that research has contributed to a 43% reduction in mortality. Here in our state, right now, we have $7.9 million of active research. And in fact, the 19 drugs that have been approved by the FDA in the last 10 years have been a result of the research funded by Susan G. Komen. It is really critical to raise awareness for this because one of the most important things for saving lives is early detection. So we are able to have the lower mortality that we have because women are more aware of their breast health and they are, you know, taking the steps to get their mammograms on an annual basis. So I encourage everyone here to go out and get your mammogram, schedule your mammogram, encourage the women in your lives to also get their mammogram. I also want to say that men also get breast cancer as well, 1% of men, 1% of breast cancer diagnosis are men. So it's just important, and I'm really grateful to you guys for having me here and to raise awareness of this critical issue. We couldn't do our work without the awareness that proclamations like this make.
Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 3 million trees in Nebraska. It is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Trees are a renewable source and give us wood for our homes and fuel for our fires. Trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economy, economy's vitality of business areas, and beautifies our community. I proclaim October 26th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the city of Flugerville and urge all residents to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Dave Madden, who's a forester, is here to accept this proclamation.
We're going to share a few other people to partner in this here with the Central Texas Wood Terrorist.
Central Texas Wood Terrorist?
We're actually the friends of the kids that are.
Are you high?
Squeeze in.
You remember tree, don't you?
Oh, our next most fun part of the council is reading of the consent agenda. Council. Yes.
5B, 5I, 5J, 5K, 5Z.
5 what?
B, I, J, K, and Z.
Z as in zebra.
Z as in zebra.
Or Xerox, right?
You gonna pull it? No, no, I'm not.
Anybody else? All right, Trista.
Okay, I have items 5B as in boy, 5I, 5J, 5K, and 5Z pulled from the consent agenda. Item 5A is approving the first reading of an ordinance with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-02-24 of the city of Flugerville, Texas as amended by approving a specific use permit for industrial uses, light, and office warehouse on approximately 42.23 acre property generally located north of Cameron Road, east of the northeast metro park, south of the Pecan Street, and west of State Highway 130 situated in the William Caldwell survey abstract number 162, city of Flugerville, Travis County, Texas, to be known as the Cameron Road Industrial Specific Use Permit, providing a cumulative and repealer clause, providing for non-severability clause, and providing an effective date. 5C, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-15-02-24 of the city of Flugerville, Texas as amended by changing the zoning designation of approximately 48.969 acres situated in the Joseph Wheel survey number 8, abstract number 802 in Travis County, Texas, from Agriculture Development Reserve to Planned Unit Development District to be known as the Public Works Complex Planned Unit Development, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing percebability, and providing an effective date. 5D, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending Title 15 Land Usage Chapter 152 Subchapter B, roadway impact fees to include an updated roadway impact fee service area map and approving a roadway impact fee study update incorporated herein containing severability and repealer clauses and providing an effective date. 5E, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending the city of Flugerville, Texas Code of Ordinances, Title 7 Traffic Code, Chapter 71 Parking Regulations, Section 71.05 Parking Prohibited in Certain Designated Areas, by adding prohibited parking for special events, providing for a penalty for a violation of Chapter 71 as a Class C misdemeanor and a fine in amount not to exceed $500, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, repealing all ordinances to the extent they are in conflict, providing severability, and providing an effective date. 5F, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, adopting the Flugerville fee schedule, amending certain fees, and establishing costs and fees charged by the city of Flugerville, providing for a penalty for a violation of the city of ordinance's effective date. Third reading with a caption reading an ordinance of the city of Flugerville, Texas, amending ordinance number 1203-12-02-25 of the city of Flugerville, Texas as amended by changing the zoning designation of approximately 10.53 acre of unplanted land situated in the Jacob Kasner survey, abstract number 2753 in Travis County, Texas, from Agriculture Development Reserve to Single Family Residential to be known as the 1917 and 1931 row loop rezoning, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Items 5B, 5I, 5J, 5K, and 5Z have been pulled. All items remaining may be acted upon in a single motion.
So moved. Second. Have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Our next item is public hearings and ordinances. 6A, conduct a public hearing and consider action to approve an ordinance on the first and final reading with the caption reading six supplemental ordinance and the master ordinance, to the master ordinance, establishing the city of Flugerville, Texas Utility System Revenue Financing Program, authorizing the issuance of the city's utility system revenue bond, city of Flugerville Master Program Water and Wastewater CIP Tranche 1. Tracy.
Good evening. This ordinance and the six supplemental is very important to the funding of our infrastructure for water and wastewater. The funding will be provided by the Environmental Protection Agency. It's part of the WIFIA program. We have done this funding in the past, and it saves the city a lot of money in interest. And so we are looking to do the master loan agreement that'll be about $438 million. This particular tranche, the very first one, that should close on October 15th is up for $156 million. And it is funding an additional portion of the water treatment plant, the Weisling-Pecan Street water line, and the Colorado River water line. I do have our financial advisor and our bond counsel here if there is any questions.
Good to go.
They need a motion to close the hearing.
Move to close the hearing. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Is there anybody here in the public wishing to make any comment on this? Seeing none. Move to closing hearing. Second. Have a motion and second to close the hearing. Move to approve 6A is presented. Motion to approve 6A is presented and a second. And motion carried. Thank you. Okay, moving quickly down the row. Item 7, discuss and consider actions pulled from the consent agenda, and Trista, if you'll read the caption.
Yes, absolutely. Starting with 5B, approving an ordinance on second reading with a caption reading an ordinance, amending the city of Flugerville Code of Ordinances, Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 153 Planning by adopting the Downtown Streetscape Master Plan, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Sure, is there a question?
Yeah, I am unclear on 5B, what this commits the city to spending in the long term and whether or not this commits the city to going with putting utilities that are currently above ground, underground. Is that just an option, or is that a commitment under the, under the ordinance?
Your annual budget would be what would be the commitment. So if it's not budgeted today, it wouldn't be spent.
Okay.
So the way that you would make that commitment is through your annual budget process.
Okay, but this invasions moving those utilities underground, is that correct?
It, it, yes, it does.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second on 5B.
Next item is 5I, approving the purchase of air conditioning units and service from the Brant Companies LLC for the Flugerville Public Library totaling $74,683.35 and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
So my question is, what's the, what's the condition of the, the air conditioning? Are these units failing? Do we, is this just a regular replacement, kind of a maintenance and upkeep thing? Or do we have, do we have a critical situation? You know, just in the library the other day, it seemed pretty cool, it was hot outside. What's going on?
These two units are 10-plus years old, and they are not operable anymore, so we just need to replace those.
They're not operable at all?
They're not currently operable.
Okay, so they're, so the other AC units in the library are having to work overtime in order to pick up the slack for these two?
Yeah, this would help create balance, and then also it's adding another split unit for the book drop room, which is, needs to be climate controlled because that hot air gets into other parts of the building.
And that book, of course, I wouldn't be in the book drop room, that's not publicly accessible. So I didn't, I didn't realize it was hot in there. Okay, all right, thank you very much. Move to approve, item 5I.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Motion carried.
Next item is item 5J, approving the purchase of physical and electronic library materials for the public from Ingram, $64,100 Midwest tapes hoopla, $82,000, and overdrive, $63,000 totaling $209,100 for FY25 and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
So I just got a notification the other day that the overdrive app is no longer functioning, and I'm wondering what's going on here.
Sure, we can address the overdrive app, Jennifer.
So overdrive, oops, I'm sorry, has changed their app to Libby.
Were they acquired, or?
No, it's just an upgraded version of the overdrive app. So their Libby app, what device are you using? Because it kind of depends on.
Android.
Okay, the Libby app should work fine on that. I have it on my own phone, so you just have to go to overdrive and download.
Yeah, no, I've downloaded Libby from the App Store, but it was not clear to me that that was.
Yeah, they just changed the way they deliver.
So it's, it's the same service that's being provided, they just have a, they put a new paint job on the, on the old car?
It's easier to use, in my opinion, so. Especially if you're working with like a Kindle or something. Because before, it would take you to the Amazon store, and then you'd have to go from the Amazon store back to overdrive. So Libby just smoothes the way.
A little more seamless in the, in the operation?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's more customer-friendly service?
Yeah, exactly.
All right. That's all the questions I have on that move to approve 5J.
Second.
Motion carried.
Next item is 5K, approving the procurement of a Brink responder drone and requiring accessories and services utilizing the Brink Drones Inc. responder safeguard plan and utilizing the buy board purchasing cooperative in the amount of $23,999.20 per year for five years and authorizing the city manager to execute the same.
All right, well, we've been hearing a lot about dangerous drones in Ukraine dropping flammable materials on people, and I want to make sure, we don't have anything like that in works here. Chief, could you tell us what these drones are going to be used for? And are, and can you tell us if they're going to be weaponized?
Our drone will not be weaponized. We will not be using it to detonate a charge. It'll be used for crime scene reconstruction, lost persons or missing persons, and/or suspect apprehension.
So little kid gets lost in the, in the creek, you know, in the, in the forest. This drone is going to help us find that person?
Yes, sir.
Is it equipped with FLIR?
Yes, it is, sir.
Sweet.
And who's your drone operator?
We have three drone operators through PD, so the drone will actually be set here at PD, and when they come on duty, they'll take it with them in their, in their vehicle. But we do have three current FAA certified drone pilots.
And so that would, that would stay in the, in the equipment room locked up inside?
It'll go out into that, into that officer or that sergeant's vehicle when they become on duty.
Okay.
So it'll always be on the street.
Oh, okay, all right, sounds good. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate that. Move to approve, item 5K.
Second.
And motion carried.
And last item pulled from the consent agenda is 5Z, approving a resolution adopting policy and procedures for naming of city property.
I think we're almost there. Uh, but on, uh, page three of the, the policy there, we have, uh, a sentence fragment uh, in, uh, uh, line, uh, denominator, uh, line number four. Um, the second sentence looks like a sentence until you get halfway through it and then you realize this is a sentence fragment. Naming or renaming after an individual should be someone who.
Which number is this? Z, five Z?
Uh, page three, number four.
Okay.
Is that correct?
It's, it's red line four, sorry. It's, it's three, the second paragraph in three in the red line.
Right, and then that list, and then that list for, excuse me, five bullets that described that person?
Right, but the, the problem is naming or renaming should be someone.
I, I have naming or renaming after an individual should be someone who.
And then, and then I'll. Except that's not grammatically correct.
Was, was a local or regional leader, had strong ties to the community, passed in the line of duty, lived in Flugerville for ten years.
It should be something like, should have.
It's the part before the letter A, that's the problem.
Instead of someone who, someone who meets these qualifications.
Who means? So the, the sentence needs to be changed to something like, uh, when naming or renaming, uh, a building or whatever, uh, after an individual, that individual should be someone who.
It's a, it, okay.
Oh, is it tapping issue?
It's not, it.
He, he's, he's complaining about the grammar.
It's.
Exactly.
I understand and we'd be happy to.
It's a grammar issue, not a tapping issue, I gotcha.
We'll use a call, we'll, we'll clean up the grammar.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's all the, uh, you know.
I think with a grammatical change, not wording change, I would still present it to approve this evening.
All right. I will, I will trust the city manager to fix the grammar on that.
Gotcha.
Uh, with that proviso, I move that we approve five Z.
Motion and second. Oops, hold on. Motion carried, thank you. All right, item eight, regular agenda, uh, executive session deliberation regarding real property pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven two of the Texas Government Code regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, and/or value of real property related to the one oh one East Pecan Street, um, whatever. During executive session. During executive session.